Good evening. Welcome to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. We're happy to have you today, Madam Clerk. Will you do the roll call?
If you could use your clickers.
Oh, I forgot that thing works. I've been on vacation and I don't know how to do it.
The one is yes or here?
Mine.
County Manager, would it be the appropriate time to excuse Commissioner Coulson since he's sick?
I want to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Coulson.
Second.
Move it forward and we'll have to replace hers and we'll mark you as present.
I have a motion on the floor to excuse Commissioner Tom Coulson.
I second the motion.
And it was seconded by Beth Ward. Motion by Lauren White.
You'll have to vote by hand.
Hold on a minute. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Those opposed, likewise. Make your motion passes. Please stand for the invocation. Monica Jacobs, are you here? Please, wait at the podium. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Monica Jacobs and the Director of Secondary Ed with Pitt County Schools.
Okay.
And, yes ma'am.
We will have the invocation by Vice Chairman Nunnely. Okay, you didn't tell me that. Anybody feel like praying, pray.
Shall we pray? Eternal God, we come first of all to thank you. We thank you for this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. As that you be with us as we decide the business of citizens of Pitt County. In the holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Jacobs?
Again, I'm Monica Jacobs and with Pitt County Schools. And I have her here with us, Michaela Wiggins, who is a student at Aiden Griffin High School. She's enrolled in JRLTC and she's going to lead the pledge for you this evening.
Thank you very much. Welcome at the podium, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
For those parents who would like to see the young lady when they get home, you may go to Facebook and pull it down and see it at any time. And YouTube right there. We have the agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move and approve the agenda.
Second. Board members, I would like to recognize and I would like to for our clerk to get who made the motion, Vice Chair Nunnely, and it was seconded by?
Beth Ward.
Beth Ward. Thank you. I want the records to be straight. We are creating history here. Thank you so very much for your cooperation. Now we will have, there aren't any public?
Have to come first.
Oh, we got to vote. All in favor? Are we ready? Is my clicker working? It's working. Unanimously passed. Thank you. Now we will have public addresses to the board. And the clerk has notified me that no one has signed up. Did anyone come in in the morning to and missed it? All right, we will have item number seven, award ceremony presentation.
Madam Chair, did we approve their agenda?
You did. Okay, I missed. There was so much going on.
I missed that part. Didn't know whether I voted for it or not.
Well, my clicker wasn't working, so you know, it works an answer.
Okay. Ms. Florida Hardy would come forward to assist with employee service awards. Good evening, everyone. As we do quarterly, this is our opportunity to recognize, our opportunity to recognize employees for their years of service with Pitt County Government at five, 10, 15, 20, 25, and 30 years of service. And so with those, I will, if you'll, as I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate. And for those who are eligible for a PIN, you'll receive your PIN. And for those at 20 years who had an option of a watch or a check, those folks who received the check will have that money direct deposited directly into their account. So, so thank you to each of these employees for your dedicated service to Pitt County. We'll start with five years. The first one is Savannah Jones Blackman, Sheriff's Office.
Thank you for your service.
And we can hold applause until the end of each category. Stephen Downs Detention Center?
I'll receive on his behalf.
Come on. Thank you, Chief.
Be sure to thank Mr. Jones for his service. Thank you.
Danny Gonzalez, Solid Waste and Recycling.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez, for your service.
Justin Jones, Buildings and Grounds. Bryce Marshall with the Detention Center could not be with us this evening. And Bennett Mobley with the Detention Center could not be with us this evening. If you'll take those.
We would appreciate it. Thank you so much. You're getting your exercise in. Appreciate and tell them thank you on behalf of Pitt County Boards.
Sharon Whitfield, Public Health.
He's got one.
Is Sharon Whitfield with us? Okay, congratulations to Sharon. Ernest Williams, Solid Waste and Recycling. It could not be with us tonight. Raymond Vargas, Sheriff's Office.
Deputy Vargas, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
We look forward to continuing.
That concludes our five-year service awards. The next group has stayed with us double that time. Our 10-year awards go to Michael Sean Riley, Solid Waste and Recycling. Could not be with us this evening. Social Services, Terri Ann Burley.
Oh, thank you so much for your service. We look forward to keeping you.
Social Services, Ashley Clark.
Hi, Ashley. Thank you so much for your services.
Social Services, Pamela Ellis. Could not, oh, there she is.
She's here.
I thought I saw you around there.
And thank you so much for your services.
Social Services, Jasmine George. Could not be with us. Catherine Gonzalez in Social Services let us know that she could not be here this evening. Karen McWayne, Social Services. I saw Karen come in. There she is.
Thank you so much for your services.
Congratulations. Tycole Murphy, the Detention Center could not be with us. Tasha Wilson, Social Services. Is Tasha Wilson with Social Services here?
Are you in Social Services, Tab?
No. Tycole Murphy's and we'll hold on to Tasha Wilson's. And that concludes our 10-year service awards. 15 years in Social Services, we have Catherine Strickland Adams. Is she with us? Okay, we'll hold on to her award. Lynn Carter in Public Health told us she couldn't be here this evening. Eric Clay with Buildings and Grounds said that he could not be here this evening. Thomas Knight could not be here from Social Services. And Wanda Murphy could not be here from Social Services. Joseph Neal, Sheriff's Office.
We are so happy to have Deputies getting awards. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Valerie Peel, Social Services.
Thank you so much for being here. We love to have great 10-year people.
Noel Slocum with Social Services could not be here. Emma Stallings from Social Services. I don't think I see Emma. Christopher Sires, Sheriff's Office.
We're all kept safe by you guys. Thank you so much for your service.
And that concludes our 15-year awards. The next group has been dedicated to Pitt County Government for 20 years. Teresa Mills, Solid Waste and Recycling could not be here. Robert Taylor, Detention Center.
Thank you so much for your service. We appreciate all of it.
And Tina Worthington, Social Services could not be here. Round of applause for 20 years. 25 years, we have David Cherry with Buildings and Grounds who could not be here this evening. And then our final 30-year award goes to Margarita Howard, Social Services. I know I saw Margarita around the corner.
Oh, we are so happy to welcome people with such longevity. Thank you so much for your service.
And that will do it for our service awards. Not for service awards. We're good.
Thank you. Do we say anything now?
Yes, now we're going to roll right into Employee of the Month.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
Thank you, Florida.
And let me grab my county connection.
This is Ms. Florida Hardy. Mrs. Hardy is Head and Director of Human Services. Personnel. I want them to know the people and what you did. Because I'm standing up here with nothing to do.
Thank you for being the filler. At this time, we would like to call forward Danny Gonzalez and his family if they would like to come up and join him.
And do we come out?
Yes, we came for the picture. And if you want to line up in front, we'll come join you out in front in a second. Yep, right along the front here would be great. And this month, I have the pleasure of sharing with the public and our workforce that Danny Gonzalez has been selected as our Employee of the Month. His nominator stated that he was selected for his, or that he was nominated for his exceptional pride in his employment with Pitt County Government. The nominator stated Danny has demonstrated diligence and persistence in maintaining a failing pump station at the Solid Waste Center. His hard work over the last few months has extended the life of that pump, saving the county money in the long run. Danny never complains. He always has a smile on his face. He's a hard-working employee who brings diversity and positivity into our workforce. Danny has served Pitt County for over five years as a mechanic in Solid Waste and Recycling. And so with that, we will come around. Madam Chairwoman, if you will present Danny with a certificate that reads, Certificate of Recognition, Employee of the Month, January 2023, presented to Danny Gonzalez, Solid Waste and Recycling, in recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County Government and the citizens we serve. And we've added a bonus $100 check in there for you as well.
Would you like to say something? Would you like to say something? Thank you, please, by all means.
Want to get our picture first? And then he can, all right. You get on that side and I'll get on this side. How about that?
Well, manager, you won't, I'll stand near the pump, but can you stand up here you want?
We're good.
We ready?
Yes. All of us?
Is this good enough? Are you smiling?
Thank you. And if you want to say a few words, you may.
You may speak.
Well, I guess this $100 are going to buy something to give me the best size of my son. He's only 12 years old.
Oh, wow. Thank you so much for your service.
I want to thank you to everyone here on behalf of all the coworkers, to the Commissioners and everything, County Manager, my boss, Tim Carlyle, and John Demery. Thank you very much for your support, for your open policy and in make this happen. Thank you very much.
Are we finished?
We can stay down here for your next item. Number eight is a presentation. Save us a few steps. And your next item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing January 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. If Pam Strickland and her team would come forward.
I'm wearing my pin.
Terrific. Yep, we can, you can. Yes, just spread around however you can.
Hey, sure.
All right, every January, we are thrilled to have the opportunity to proclaim January 23 as, the month of January, as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. And this year, Chairwoman Mary Perkins-Williams signed a proclamation that reads as follows. Whereas human trafficking involves the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, buying, or selling of human beings for their services of labor or commercial sex through the use of force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas human trafficking violates basic human rights and deprives victims of human dignity and freedom. And whereas human trafficking is a growing global and national problem, with North Carolina being consistently ranked among the top 10 states for prevalence in human trafficking. And whereas it is imperative that we educate our communities, our young people, and families to take an active interest in learning how to recognize the risks and resist predators who use coercion and threats to manipulate children and adults into labor or sex trafficking. And whereas sex buyers are the reason that children and adults are being groomed and recruited by traffickers into the exploitative sex industry. And whereas our community must hold accountable those people who purchase sex and those people who look the other way. And whereas the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking seeks to eradicate human trafficking by empowering organizations and individuals through collaboration, leadership, and training. And whereas the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, the Pitt County Department of Social Services, Pitt County Schools, and many other organizations are active members of the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking. And whereas Pitt County is committed to protecting people vulnerable to human trafficking and taking action to end human trafficking through prevention, prosecution, and partnerships. Now therefore, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim January 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month in Pitt County and commend its observance to all citizens. Adopted this the ninth day of January 2023, signed by Mary Perkins-Williams, Chairwoman, Pitt County Board of Commissioners, and attested by Kimberly Hines, Clerk to the Board. If you will present this.
Thank you so much for your leadership. And I'm on behalf of the citizens of Pitt County. We look forward to continue services, all of you.
Thank you. And Pam Strickland has been consistently with us through the years with her team. So, thank you so much. Did you have a few?
I guess we need to tighten up or whatever.
We need to tighten up for a picture?
Yep. She's right there. Thank you.
All right.
Now call Ms. Russell Peel. Departmental Spotlight, Tax Administration.
And as the Board is aware, periodically, we do a department spotlight to help educate the Board and citizens about services of the various departments within county government. Russell has a PowerPoint to share with you this evening.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Tonight, as Manager Gallagher has said, I'll be doing the Tax Administration Department Spotlight this afternoon. First, I'd like to start with our mission statement for the Tax Administration. And that is to list, map, and assess property and bill and collect all avalon taxes in Pitt County, thereby ensuring all citizens are provided a fair and equitable avalon tax process by administering the laws, governing the process with integrity, professionalism, with installing the highest degree of public confidence and providing prompt, accurate, and courteous service. The, some of the highlights for the Tax Administration is as of last fiscal year, we have $15.2 billion in taxable property. Last year, last fiscal year, we had a 99.42 collection rate. We currently have 32 full-time employees and two part-time staff members as well. Where located, the Tax Assessor's Office is at 110 Evans Street, which is, if you're familiar with Evans Street, directly behind the courthouse before you get to the Town Commons. And the Tax Collection Office is on Washington Street, the two-story building in the same parking lot. Some of the major duties for our department. We maintain tax, Pitt County's property parcel data through deed transfers and mapping parcel splits. We review, list, and process all property to verify ownership and accuracy of the listing data. We perform field reviews to confirm compliance with the applicable laws and update our photos for our real property. We verify eligibility and conduct compliance audits for properties that are receiving an exemption. And we also defend value appeals through the informal and formal appeal process. Some of the property data that we are responsible for. We have roughly 141,454 registered motor vehicles that we look out for and oversee the assessment on, 78,000 non-real property parcels. We have 13,693 individual personal property accounts. Personal property are items like mobile homes that are not considered real estate, boats, jet skis, unlicensed vehicles. We have roughly 6,000 accounts receiving some type of tax exemption, which includes our veterans exclusion exemption, OAE, present use program. We've got 4,713 business personal property accounts. Business personal property are items like computers, furniture, appliance, tools, machinery, and equipment that is used in conjunction or with an income-producing type business. They're supposed to list that yearly with us. We have 319 public service accounts as well. Some of the hot topics for our office. The 2024 reappraisal, which I have a presentation shortly after that about that. As part of that, I did want to highlight that our real property staff, appraisal staff, they took, they've updated roughly around 37,576 photos of our properties. And they've done roughly 38,033 field inspections completed as part of that process and verifying that data. Other hot topics is inflation, recession, and home and vehicle prices. And I also would like to take an opportunity to, to also mention that taxes were past due as of Friday. So if anyone would like to talk to our office about setting up a payment plan, they can contact our office at 902-3436. That'll be a direct line into the staff so they don't have to go through all the prompts so they can get those, the payment plan set up as we are starting to try to collect those taxes that are now past due. And listing forms are also due by January 31st to the assessor's office. Questions?
Are there any questions at the Board? Any questions? Thank you so much for your report on spotlighting the Tax Office. Please continue with your 2024 reappraisal update.
So it's getting close. We are in that time of year where roughly not quite a full 12 months out from the 2024 countywide reappraisal that's scheduled. So this is just kind of a, there's no action on the Board that I'm asking for the Board tonight. This is just a presentation to give the Board an update as the progress that we're doing and some key highlights that's coming. One of the questions a lot of individuals may ask is, why have a reappraisal? The first reason, North Carolina General Statute 105286 is required each county reappraise all property at least every eight years. It creates equity within the tax base between real, personal, and public service companies. And it assures all properties reflect the current tax, current market value. In Pitt County, we decided in 2004, the Board did, to shorten the eight-year cycle and they start, they started reappraising every four years. Pitt County, as part of the other parts while we're doing it, we're updating all real property values to 100% of market value as of the effective date of January 1st, 2024. And our last reappraisal was effective January 1st, 2020. Key facts, we have roughly, the staff has roughly 78,000 non-parcels that are set to be reappraised. We have 1,048 market areas. We've updated, like I said earlier, 37,576 photos. I believe there is roughly around 56,000 improved properties in the county. So we've gone, done over half of those. And we've got 38,033 field inspections completed. And we started that process in July of 2020. What is market value? North Carolina General Statute 105283 defines market value as, "The price estimated in terms of money at which the property would change hands between a willing buyer and a financially able, I'm sorry, a willing and financially able buyer and a willing seller, neither being under any compulsion to buy or sell and both having reasonable knowledge of all uses of which the property is adopted and for which it is capable of being used." How do we determine, how do the assessor's office determine market value? The appraisal staff diligently and carefully researches and analyzes sales, building costs, and income information in our local markets to determine and estimate a market value for all properties. The appraisal staff diligently conducts field reviews. They also use questionnaires and surveys to verify and update our tax listing data. Sales, income, and cost are the three approaches that will be used to help determine the market value. The appraisal staff. This is a photo of our appraisal staff. The Pitt County staff consists of eight appraisers. There are six residential, two commercial, two real property managers, one residential, one commercial, two real property specialists. And then also myself and the assistant, assistant administrator as well. The staff that we saw earlier, that would be the individuals that would be conducting the value. We won't hire out with a third-party company or anything. Those would be the individuals. They're also the ones that conducted the field reviews and the citizen see out in the field as they talk or they call into the office and they speak to the staff. It's one of those individuals. There are veteran staff. They've got nearly 140 years of combined experience. And each appraiser, if they're not already, will be certified by the North, through the North Carolina Department of Revenue. Who are appraisal partners? We can't do it alone. We can't do it alone. So how do we, we partner with the following groups, our citizens. They're out, as our staff are talking, doing our field reviews, the citizens, we try to engage with the citizens. They tell us about their neighborhoods. They tell us about the goods, some of the, maybe the things that are not so good. They kind of give us information that we take into consideration. We also, as I said earlier, will send out sometimes surveys requesting information. If they send it back, that's how they help engage us. We've got Farragut and our NCPTS, that's a partnership that deliver our camera system that we'll be using in the reappraisal. It offers consistency in the appraisal process and the collaboration between 20 counties that use that. We share experiences and advice. We've got the Pitt County MIS Department. They help us throughout when we do have run it too. Like, we all know technology's great, but there's always some type of issue, so Mr. Taylor, his staff, thank you. Some days, I think they, we call them, I don't know how many times a day, but they get us up and running so we can continue on with our process. We also have, we'll be partnering with Schachelfer and Associates. Some of y'all may be familiar with some of their monthly reports that they do. They'll be providing us some, also some data for the market, local market, to help us that we don't have readily available to us. And we also have our company specialists. Most people are familiar with the online property record card and Comper, the sales comps. That's the company that helps sponsor those and get that information out there to the public. And so they can see sales in their general areas. So our initial market analysis. In 2020, we had roughly 74,631 parcels in Pitt County. In 2023, we're right around a little over 78,000. That number's increased, I think I checked today, almost by another hundred, so it's about 78,100. The median home value in 2020, according to Schachelfer and Associates' report, was 165,000. The median home price as of November, this past November, was 250,000. Part of what we also do, we're required in our office, is to turn in a ratio report to the state. A sales ratio is calculated by dividing the county's assessed value by the property's sales price. An example of that is if a property is assessed by our office at 90,000 and it sells for 100,000, that sales ratio is 90%. We're required to submit a random sample of about 500 sales of all that take place throughout the year to the state. They take that and they do some analysis with it, and they report that back to our office and I think the county manager's office as well. So as of January 1st, 2020, our last reappraisal, we were at 99.94%. January 1st of 2021, we were, it was 92.4, and I'm estimating that this January, when I do that, do the report and submit it to them, the final number will be known in around April, it'll be around, maybe possibly around 72.9%. Upcoming dates for the reappraisal. Tonight, we're doing, I'm doing an update, requesting no motion or action. This is just for informational purposes for the board. In August, the first meeting, the intended schedule is that we'll present the Schedule of Values to the board. The Schedule of Values is just, it's a manual that contains our standards for the tax office, rules, and for the appraisal staff while appraising real property and at its true market and in present use, and it will also guide us valuing the property for the next four years as well. So that, however, how that schedule is set, that's what it'll be for the next four years. That, that will be presented to the board at the first meeting. We'll also advertise the schedule is open, Schedule of Values is open for public inspection. At the second meeting in August, we're scheduled tentatively to have a public hearing for the Schedule of Values. The first meeting in September, I'll request that the board adopt that schedule, and then we'll advertise the adoption of the schedule. In January 2024, that's the market value determined as of that date, and then hopefully shortly after, the county will be mailing out notices to all property owners to notify them of what their new assessed value is as of January 1st, 2024. Any questions?
After the last appraisal, I had a few phone calls about vehicles. Do y'all automatically assess vehicles a certain year model and older as antiques?
The, for antiques, if I'm, I would have to double check. Let me, let me get back and let's see on that. I think there's a process that they have to do to be considered an antique, but I'm not sure exactly what that process is.
Because during the last revow, I had several people reach out to me, and mostly, these people, they had just like older vehicles and they weren't antiques, but they were kind of reassessed at a really high value, but I guess they could call the tax office and talk with you or somebody else there to get the true value of that vehicle and not like an antique.
Correct. Yes, ma'am. So I would, I would say that if they have a question about their, the personal property section, or they can contact me and I'll probably forward them on, and then have them reach out and they'll talk with them and work with them on that, that particular value, that process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And if I could just add to that, and correct me if I'm wrong, motor vehicle assessment is separate and apart from the real property reappraisal process.
That's correct.
So the answer to that question would be true in any given year, not just a reappraisal year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Next item on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Public hearing. We have.
Mr. Coburn.
Mr. Coburn. Cam Coburn.
Good evening. This is phase two of the 5311 grant process administration. Came before you all in the fall for the administrative piece. The two, the capital and administrative pieces are typically done in conjunction with one another. That was not the case this year as supply chain issues has caused the state to delay this process. So here we are again. And pit area transit for fiscal year 24 is seeking 549,000 of federal and state funds with a local match of $61,000 for a combined total of 610,000. These are, these funds are requested to replace vehicles that have met or exceeded useful life in fiscal year 24. Those would include five conversion transit vehicles and one light transit vehicle, or LTV, more commonly known. This is an annual recurring application for funding, and at this time, I would request a motion for public hearing.
You can just declare the public hearing open.
I declare the public hearing open.
Madam Chairwoman, you have no one signed up to speak, but based on the terms of this grant, if you will explicitly request whether or not there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Anyone? Once? Anyone twice? Thank you. The hearing is now closed.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
It has been motioned by Commissioner McLawhorn, and second. This is the adoption of the resolution. Okay, thank you. Please vote. Unanimously passed, Madam Chairwoman. Item number two. Mr. James Rose. Thank you, Mr. Coburn.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. We have another public hearing for your consideration tonight. This is one that you actually dealt with at your last meeting, but was also dealt with almost 18, going on 18 years ago now, when the Board of Commissioners actually went through a process to abandon the road right-of-way for Radio Station Road. And in so doing, we now have a request by the surrounding property owner, there's only one, that they would like to have this road officially closed. And within your agenda package, you'll see the general statutes that we're closely following, including for this public hearing tonight, to ensure that we're closing this portion of Radio Station Road. And this is located, those of you that are familiar, actually used to be a portion of Stansburg Road, is now a stub road of sorts, and the far end of it, .08 miles, less than one-tenth of a mile, is requested to be closed at this point. So that's the area, again, one property owner on both sides of what used to be right-of-way on that segment of the road. So tonight, Madam Chairwoman, we are looking at you adopting the order that's part of your agenda package to formally close that portion of Radio Station Road. I welcome any questions. If not, if you'll open the public hearing.
Any questions from the board? I declare the public hearing open. Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Yes, you have one person signed up to speak, Scott Anderson, with Art Consulting. If the attorney would read the statement.
Pitt County welcomes all comments on this proposed road closure. Each person will, each person will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairmanwoman and members of the board. My name is Scott Anderson. I'm with Art Consulting, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant and property owners. We appreciate the opportunity to present this request to you. Again, this was previously presented to you. This is just a very short stretch of a piece of road that the abandonment process was started a really long time ago, and now the property owners wish to complete that process to allow for future development. Again, DOT has turned over and is no longer maintaining this piece of road. And again, we're the only property owner that fronts on this piece of property, so there's no other properties that are being affected by this request. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any question on the board? Any question? I declare, thank you so very much. I declare the hearing closed, and I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the order to close.
Second.
Who, who was it? Non-Ale, and who seconded?
I do.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The vote is unanimous, Madam Chair. Items for report. You have at your place the boards, commissions, and appointment that's been made. Any questions? Any changes? Then we have approved listing. Madam, let me turn through my page. Item number two. Item number two. Request for increase in base pay and night shift and financial pay. Our sheriff is Paula Dance.
Here you name commissioners.
Name.
I am here before you tonight to give your report about a topic that is important to our community and to the men and women who serve and protect us every day. The pay of our deputies. As many of you know, our deputies work long and often difficult hours to keep our community safe. They put their lives on the line every day, and we are grateful for their service. However, despite the crucial role that officers play in our society, they are often underpaid compared to other professions that require similar levels of training and responsibilities. This is not fair, and it is not right. That is why I'm proposing that as a start, we give our officers a pay increase. This increase would not only be a well-deserved recognition of, recognition of the hard work and dedication of our officers, but one key benefit of giving officers a pay increase is that it can help to attract and retain the best and brightest to serve in our community. Currently, our officers are underpaid compared to other agencies that require similar levels of training and responsibility. This can lead to high turnover rates and difficulty in recruiting new officers. By, by providing a competitive salary and benefits package, we can attract top-quality candidates to join our force and encourage current officers to stay with us for the long term. In addition to attracting and retaining the best officers, a pay increase can also help to improve morale and motivation within the agency. When officers feel that they are fairly compensated for the important work they do, it can lead to a higher job satisfaction and a stronger sense of commitment to the community. This in turn can lead to a better, to better performance and more efficient, effective policing. Another benefit of giving officers a pay increase is that it can help to improve the overall quality of police work. When officers are paid a fair wage, they are more likely to have the resources and support that they need to do their job effectively. This can include things like access to training and professional development opportunities as well as equipment and technology that can help them to perform their duties more efficiently and effectively. In addition to the pay increase of 5%, I would also like to propose a 5% differential pay for those employees who work night shift. I know that this proposal may not be popular with everyone, and that there may be those who argue that we cannot afford to give our officers a pay increase. However, I believe that the benefits of investing in our officers far outweigh any short-term financial concerns. As the majority of the counties around us, counties and agencies around us continue to recognize and rectify the pay increases, we at the Pitt County Sheriff's Office continue to fall further and further behind. I don't know if you all realize this or not, but my officers provide law enforcement support for all of these agencies around us within the county, within the community, and oftentimes are standing side by side with officers who gets paid more. In conclusion, I believe that it is time for us to show our officers the appreciation and respect that they deserve. By giving them a pay increase and differential pay, we can ensure that they are able to continue serving our community with distinction and dedication. Keep this in mind as you take it into consideration. It is because of officers, our officers, that you can enjoy a sense of security in your homes, schools, and county as you go about your regular day. Remember, leader in the state, best in the east. I want to bring to your attention Greenville Police Department. Within the 35-square-mile area that they are responsible for, they are responsible for responding to calls for service, investigating calls for service, arrests within that jurisdiction. And they, their starting pay is currently at $50,100. Aiden PD is responsible for calls for service, answering those calls for service, investigating those calls for service, traffic, and arrests within a 3.8-mile jurisdiction. And they just did a $3,000 sign-on bonus, which there again puts us behind. Winterville PD, the starting pay, they start with more than we do, and they have a 4.6-mile square area of jurisdiction, and their starting pay is $46,373. Pitt County Sheriff's Office, we are responsible for all of the things that I named that Greenville and Aiden and Winterville are responsible for, but in addition, we are the only ones who can serve civil papers, and we serve those civil papers in a 656-square-mile area. We're also responsible for, of course, the detention center. We are the only ones that are responsible for knowing where every single sex offender is in this community. We register those sex offenders. We make sure that they are not located within areas where kids may congregate, schools, fairs, playgrounds. We are solely responsible for that. We are solely responsible for the issuance of gun permits and concealed carry, and the revocation of those permits we must go pick up. And we do that. And we do that in the county and in the other jurisdictions as they have no authority to do so. Our, and that's aside from answering calls for service and making arrests and investigations. In a 656-square-mile area, and our pay is lower than Winterville. Our pay is lower than Greenville. I would ask that you all would consider, as the other counties around us, the majority of them, have recognized the dedication that their officers provide every day to make our community safe, I would hope that we are leaders in the state and best in the east. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Madam Sheriff. At this time, I'd like to ask the manager if she would prepare a report to include the items that the sheriff has presented to us and geared towards the entire municipalities within Pitt County. And have that report ready for this board at budget time. I think that would be appropriate, and then it would be a very strong and positive report. We appreciate the work that our high sheriff and her officers are doing. They're keeping us safe. We are, I'm delighted that they are serious about their position, but with this report, and we'll have time to look at it at budget time, and we can make our decision at that time. I'd like to instruct the members of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners to please prepare yourself for this report. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, could, does anyone know at our last budget time what the increase was for the Sheriff's Department?
Let me answer that.
Yeah.
There was no special increase just for the Sheriff's Office. All employees received a 4% cost of living.
But I meant, that's what I meant.
And then either a 1.2, and in addition to the 4% cost of living, a 1.2 or 2.4% merit increase at their anniversary date throughout the year.
Okay, so it was four or five or even 6% increase.
Across the board.
Right, that's what I meant.
That's, that's why I was asking.
Yes, and I'm glad you asked for that. That's one reason I wanted that other information out there.
And we certainly want the public to have access to that agency's report, and we are grateful to the sheriff and her deputies for keeping us safe, and we want to continue, and we want to keep, what, qualified, certified, and highly trained and experienced for the safekeeping of all of us. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Madam Sheriff. Miss Sheriff. Now, next thing, we have the manager. Report.
Yes, I have a few items on your manager's report that are outlined on your agenda. Your next meeting dates, February 6th and February 20th at 6:00 PM in this room. January 23rd at 8:30, you have your capital budgeting workshop. You'll recall this is your only regular meeting in January. Our second meeting on the 23rd is at 8:30 in the morning for capital, discussion of capital budgeting. On January 16th, I'm pleased to share that this is the first year that Pitt County government is a silver sponsor of the Chamber of Commerce Community Unity Breakfast. That will occur January 16th at 7:30 in the morning until 9:00 at ECU. On January 28th, the county, for the first time, is participating in the Greenville Junior League's Volunteer Expo at the Greenville Convention Center from 10:00 AM until 1:00 PM. That's a Saturday, and an opportunity for us to share volunteer opportunities with members of the community who attend that event. Item E is designated as the litter campaign. I'm excited to announce that Part 1 of our anti-litter campaign, which is titled "Litter Free for You and Me," and you'll see a graphic on your screen, will launch on January 16th. We'll have commercials on WNCT TV and radio ads through Curtis Media and Interbank's Media. In addition to digital marketing, print ads will also be published in the Daily Reflector and in the Daily Drum newspapers. The board will receive campaign updates in March and on May when the TARPET or TIKET final campaign phase launches. We're excited about that, and stay tuned for an exciting campaign to help clean up Pitt County. Item F, you have in front of you is a resolution adopted by the Pitt County Board of Elections. And while we are here, I'd like to recognize we have our Director of Elections in the audience and members of the Board of Elections present in the back row. So, thank you for being here this evening. They have, and this was also in your weekly packet, so you've had an opportunity to see this before tonight's meeting as well. They've adopted a resolution essentially making a request to, for your consent to allow them to relocate their administrative offices from the current modular unit that exists in the parking lot of the county office building into the Technology Enterprise Center on Green Street. That would not impact an early voting site. It's a, that has occurred here for years in the past. It would be a move of the administrative offices. I am supportive of that move. There are funds that will need to be utilized to renovate the space within the Technology Enterprise Center that has been identified, and in the absence of a second primary this year, there are some surplus funds within the election's budget that could be allocated for this purpose, so it'll have a net neutral effect on this year's budget. And I just wanted to be sure the board is in agreement with that move, and if so, we will proceed forward.
Any, any comments?
Yes, I'd just like, thank you, Madam Sheriff. I'd like to say that I think it's a great move in terms of doing this. It's going to give more space, and it would, would not impact the voting issue that we have here at the county office, so, and that would alleviate, would not cause a problem with people voting from the surrounding area. So, I think it's a positive move, and if there's a motion in order, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Let's, let's hold it to see what, am I right? Are there any comments?
No, I'm totally in favor.
Now, if there's a motion in order, Mr.?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
Commissioner McLawhorn, motion that we approve, there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Mark, Commissioner Mark. All in favor, please, let's work these clickers.
It's that hard-named Smith that gets you.
It is always the hard ones.
While they're voting, if I could just extend another thank you to the Board of Elections. And Dave, I don't know if you've got your Board of Elections, if you want to introduce them, if Madam Chair will allow while they're here.
Oh, absolutely. I was gonna, I was gonna say that at least it gives him a street address, because telling people how to find you has been a problem.
Let them come forward when you introduce them. I think that would be good.
Yeah, we've been in the modular unit since 2009, and we still have people show up downtown, the old ABC. So, you know, modular unit behind the county office building, sometimes it's difficult to find. We do have here the Chair of our Board, Etzel Mason.
Can, can they see, the camera see you? Because these are citizens that service and assist with the Board of Elections. So, come forward, please. So, I don't know where the camera.
Richard next to Dave.
Thank you.
Our Board Secretary, Debbie Avery.
Debbie.
And we have two of our members present here, Derek Brown and Pat Dunn.
Attorney Brown, please come forward. And then you said Pat.
And Pat Dunn.
Oh, yes. Hey, Pat Dunn. Come forward, thank you.
Also on our board is Jeff Blick. He was unable to be here this evening, but we have a five-member board, and they do a great job.
You've probably got about one of the best boards in the county. Look at their achievement.
I agree.
Thank you so much for your service. For the citizen of Pitt County, we're so happy to have able bodies.
So far, we're still able. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Um, I'm.
Motion passed unanimously.
Yes.
Kevin Mannigan?
Thank you. The next item on the list is just to update the board. On the Greenville ENC Alliance has embarked on their process for a strategic plan, and they have done a request for qualifications, and they have selected a company called EDAI to head their strategic planning process with some very impressive individuals leading that charge. I wanted the board to know that process was happening and that they'll, they have a meeting scheduled with the Chair and Vice Chair later this week, and maybe reaching out to different board members to get your thoughts and visions for economic development and the roles and relationships between Pitt County as the lead economic development agency through our Department of Economic Development and the public-private partnership Greenville ENC Alliance. So, I will say that our relationship with our economic development partners is the best that I have never known it to be. I'm really pleased with how we are synthesizing our work and effectively getting the job done. So, just wanted folks to know that that process was happening, if you should hear anything about it. And then the last thing on my report is the Regional Economic Development Summit. This is a concept you may or may not have thought of already in conversation with Chairwoman Perkins-Williams. She would like to consider as almost a theme for her year as Chairwoman this year, the concept of economic development. She would like, later this year, maybe in the month of June, to host a summit for the region with speakers on issues related to economic development. She has done some preliminary legwork in talking with some of our federal representatives, Don Davis and Greg Murphy. We've done some preliminary reach out to some executives for Dollar General who invest in the rural parts of rural communities, and she would like an opportunity, potentially at the Convention Center, to invite individuals from throughout the region to come together and share ideas and thoughts on economic development. That event, and I'll let the Chair talk about it further if she wants to, my purpose in raising this is to be sure that there's full board support before we, as staff, move forward to plan and pay for this event.
One of the reasons my colleagues, while, why this came up with me, as a rural person, we have 10 municipalities, and a lot of those municipalities would be best served if we at least look at them and given an opportunity to develop and not skipping or leaving anyone out of it. I just think that we will be much better in the state and certainly much better in the east by bringing in the counties with the two congresspeople who represent us, Senator Don Davis in those counties, and Congressman Don Davis, I'm sorry, and Congressman Greg Murphy. And they are agreeing, one has already committed to sponsoring it. So, if you have any comments about that right now, and I hope you will consider this because we really need some growth. We really need some development for those smaller towns and rural areas to support our families. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to just confirm my support. I think that, I think it's pretty clear that the rural-urban divide is alive and well in Pitt County and in our eastern region, and it is critically important that we set the table and continue dialogue and make sure our federal representatives and our state representatives are in tune with what we see on the ground. And I think area, events like a summit where we're able to sit and discuss and have conversations about economic development opportunities can only go toward furthering the goal of narrowing that divide, and, and so I think that's a great idea.
Any more comments? Let's start over here. I had the pleasure of seeing the administrative assistant for, he's the Senator Tillis, Senator Tom Tillis, last night, and he said he would discuss it with us, Senator Tillis, and he will be giving us an update on whether or not he would involve. It was not my intention to leave anyone out, but I grab them when I see them, and I think we can really reach the potentials for which we can be. So, I appreciate your consideration. We will have us come up with a strategic planning committee for this summit so that we can put our best forward. Thank you so much for any input you may share, and I look forward to making this a blooming success. Comments?
And the board concurs with my moving forward.
You do, how do you feel about it?
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
That's all that I have for my report.
And thank you so much for a wonderful report. We have items for consent. Who would like to make the item? I haven't heard any motions on this side.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Benjamin, and it was seconded by who?
Nonna Lee.
Nonna Lee. And I think he's searching everything all night. Thank you so much, and let's hit our clickers, and we can make it happen. Items for decision. Number one, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We have one special use permit extension request, and just for a little background information on this particular case, the board heard this request for a solar farm, or as our zoning ordinance refers to it, solar energy facility back in 2020, and this was pretty much right in the height of the pandemic. So, that was granted at that point in time. It is just to the east of the town of Griffin, and you can see it's quite a large area. It's about 300 acres in total. That special use permit was provided at that point in time, and this project really has not started. So, in turn, because of a number of factors, including some delays brought on by the pandemic, the group is requesting a six-month extension per our zoning ordinance, and this is extended a good long way simply because of some other state requirements as far as any approvals that were given during the pandemic period. So, this particular permit would expire within a few days. We, as staff, do agree that these criteria have been met, those listed from our zoning ordinance. The permit has not yet expired, has, the recipient has proceeded in due diligence and in good faith, and the conditions have not substantially changed to warrant a new application. So, with that, we are recommending, from the staff's perspective, that you extend this six months. That would give them an extension through July 11th of this year, and we contend that they have met these criteria. So, there's your motion that staff is recommending, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, a move that we approve the request for a six-month extension.
I second it. It's been motioned by Commissioner Donna Lee, seconded by Commissioner Ward, that we approve. Clickers are at work. Motion passed unanimously, Mr. Rose.
Madam Chair, while we, Mr. Rose, while he's up, I want to congratulate him for being the keynote speaker, I think, at the chamber, and lunching is coming forth, and we certainly, we know he's going to make the county proud. And also, in saying that, our own manager was the keynote speaker, I think, at the last lunch, and so we certainly feel that we are doing what we have to do to represent the east, being one of the leaders in the east and the best in the state. We continue to do that, so just wanted to.
We can do better, don't you think? When our administrative personnel is presenting in the community, it would be nice for as many of us who can to show up, to show support, and let them know that we're seriously interested. This, I was at a meeting recently, and I was a bit laid back at the presentation that congresspeople there, legislators was there, and none of us, I was there though, but none of us was there. Let's be a bit more diligent in letting people know that we are serious about the service that we provide. Thank you very much. And we are here for Mr. Corley, Tim Corley.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman.
Oh, this is a good one. Speak in the microphone.
I will be sure to speak in the microphone so you can spend this money. So, here we are. This is a project we've all been looking forward to. This is the Pitt County Sheriff's Office Administration Building. It's going to be constructed at the corner of New Hope and Green Street. This is the contract. We brought this in front of you several times to make sure that everybody was on board, kind of the direction we were heading. So, this is the, kind of the final step before we start seeing trees knocked down and ground being disturbed. So, this is the contract that was mentioned at your last meeting with Daniels and Daniels Construction Incorporated, Company Incorporated. The contract amount is $15,645,000. And that makes the overall project budget with all the other items, architect fees and other things, $13,928,508. So tonight, I'm asking for final approval of the contract. We've had outside counsel review the contract, just as FYI. So hopefully all the, including our own, our own staff. So hopefully it's buttoned up good, so we won't have any issues along the way. So we feel confident, though, with the contractor. Daniels and Daniels is a very good contractor, and we feel like we'll have everybody looking out for Pitt County's business.
On this end, we're going to ask for a motion. Would you like to do so, any of you?
So.
Motion by Commissioner Huggins, seconded by?
Second.
Mark Smith. All in favor, let's work the clickers. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk, and I want you to know that I am so delighted that the manager can plan her very first groundbreaking ceremony. Is that right?
Yes, we have it planned out. If the manager wants to announce or I can't, it doesn't get to.
Yes, please. That's progress. We're going to move forward.
Okay, well, we needed to make sure that you approved it before we added in your dates to remember. But if you add to your dates to remember, January 23rd, immediately following your CIP workshop. So you will all be here in the morning for your capital budget workshop at 11:30 that morning is the date that we have saved for a groundbreaking onsite for the new sheriff's administration building. We would love it if everyone could attend. You'll be getting details about that by email from the clerk.
And the public is invited.
Yes.
For the progress that we're going to make. And the site is on Green Street.
Yes, on the corner of Green and New Hope Road.
I didn't think, Mr.
For, for those that need a GPS address, it's 100, 100 New Hope Road.
Thank you.
100 New Hope Road.
100, 100 New Hope Road. Because I met a young lady who moved here two months ago from Orlando, Florida, and she says she loves it here and she looking forward to staying here for the rest of her life. So we have some new residents in Pitt County. Next item.
Your next item is reappointments to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and it is being recommended that Mr. Mike Taylor be reappointed as the county manager designee and Ms. Karen Harrington as the Pitt County Schools designee to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Lauren White. All in favor, let's work the clickers. Next item, number four.
It is being recommended that you appoint Dr. Virginia Partey to serve an unexpired term through June 30th, 2024, on the Pitt Community College Board of Trustees.
Same move.
It has been motioned by, see, we got two at the same time.
Well, I can't give it down.
Commissioner Huggins, seconded by Commissioner Ward. Is that all right with you ladies? Let us work the clickers.
Lastly, it's being recommended.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Next item.
It's being recommended that you reappoint Mr. Christopher Woods to the Pitt County Nursing Home and Adult Care Advisory Committee.
Same move.
Motion by Commissioner Ward, seconded by, uh, uh, Ms. Lauren White. Thank you very much. Let's work the clickers. Now, see, I look from my left and I look to my right because I think this is a balance for me to give my exercise to me. You all, I want to make sure that everyone have an opportunity to be in the records of history. Thank you very much. And the next item on the agenda are commissioners' comments. I'm going to start to my left. You all have been real quiet tonight. Commissioner Huggins.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I want to comment about, on this, if, information that we received some time ago as, as it pertained to Commissioner years of service information, that information that was passed out. I'd like to, even though it said elected, I would like that information to be complete by adding all service to, as a county commissioner, whether it is appointed or elected. So it would show our service of all commissioners on the, on the board for elected and appointed.
How y'all feel about that? Any objections? Are we all in agreement? Commissioner White. Commissioner McLawhorn. Commissioner Smith.
I'd just like to give a shout out to the town of Winterfield. They are celebrating their 125th anniversary. As many of you know, I had the honor of serving the last 17 years on that town council.
Oh, that's short time.
Well, it was a short time. It was a good time. But I'm happy to be here now, so a happy anniversary to the town of Winterfield.
Thank you. Commissioner Mc, uh, Ward.
No comment.
Commissioner Denji. I can never get that last. Holloman. I'm sorry. Commissioner Holloman, any comments? Commissioner, none of them.
No comment.
I have comments, and I wrote them out. To the residents of Pitt County, our team of county officials tonight has announced and placed into action a very positive initiative for us, the residents of Pitt County. The TRASH initiative will place Pitt County on track for us to become a very positive opportunity to grow. They've heard me talk about TRASH for a long time now, since 2020 to 2014. And the county is on track to make that growth. And to have that growth clear of all ugliness, we in eastern North Carolina will be able to do that. We're, all of us need to do our part whenever and wherever negative views are seen and do something personally to remove that unsightly occurrence. As the leader in the state and truly better in the East, I truly believe that we can do this than others. We should do what we can. Thank you very much. That's my closing statement. I need that final motion that I usually make.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn is not debatable. Work your clickers. Are we there?
I am.
I think it's, who said no? Well, you stay right here. The rest of us, thank you.